All right, welcome. This is the Warner Robins Political Forum. And right now, we're getting ready to introduce you to the candidates running for post three. And they include Angie Eugene, Scott Howard, and the incumbent Keith Larsson. We certainly are pleased to have them with us as we count down to Election Day. We're also pleased to have our two panelists, Caitlin Heck, 13 WMAZ morning anchor, and David Danzy. He is the vice president for Cadence Bank, and he is also the chair-elect for the Robins Regional Chamber of Commerce, the folks that are putting this on. And we certainly are glad to have them with us. All right, we're now getting ready to get underway. We'll start with opening statements. Two minutes for your opening statement candidates, and then we'll go to the question and answer, a minute to answer the questions, and we'll finish up with a minute for closing statements. All right, first opening statement, Angie Eugene, two minutes, go.
Hello, everyone. I'm Angie Eugene. I'm the founder of Trinity Vision Global. It's a local nonprofit here in Warner Robins. I'm the mother of two and a grandmother of one, Carter, who's my heart. I graduated from CICA. I am an ordained minister. I am a certified life coach and also certified in human trafficking. I love the city of Warner Robins, and I'm here to serve better and serve the citizens of Warner Robins. I have been in the community for 16 years, and I moved to Warner Robins in 2005. Been here ever since, and it's home. And I just love the city, and I would love to leave a better Warner Robins for my children, my grandchildren, and your family. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Howard, your turn for two-minute opening statement.
All right. Hello, I'm Scott Howard. I've moved here to Warner Robins in 1998 as a result of the brack closure of Kelly Air Force Base. I transferred here with the C-5 aircraft workload. I was an avionics mechanic for 15 years after I got here, and in my last 11 years of my career, I was an equipment specialist. I retired from the base in 2015, and since then, I've been a full-time grandfather with four grandkids living at home. I have a grown son and a grown daughter. My son lives in Kennesaw. My daughter lives here in Warner Robins with us. And I'm wanting to put back something into this community. We've enjoyed living in Warner Robins all these years. It's time for me to give something back, and I hope to do that for you. Thank you.
All right, two-minute opening statement, Mr. Larsson.
Thank you. My name is Keith Larsson, and I've been blessed to serve the city of Warner Robins for the last eight years. And I'm married to Amy. She's my wife. She's a schoolteacher. I have three children. And I, too, am a lifelong educator. For 30-plus years, I've been able to serve the citizens and families of Middle Georgia, and I hope to continue to do that. Some of the things that I'm really passionate about are our children, our families. I believe that they deserve all the opportunities in the world. And through elected positions such as this, we can really make a difference in making sure that we're providing those opportunities, whether it's through keeping them safe, through our public safety, through recreation, giving them opportunities there, and then in other areas, just giving them opportunities to thrive in whatever they're interested in. And so I believe our city is a great city. We have wonderful employees, and it's a blessing to have been a citizen here for my entire life. And so I'm just really looking forward to whatever happens, just continue to be a part of this great city and serve the Warner Robins. Thank you.
All right, now time for the question and answer period. A one-minute for your answers to the questions. The first question will come from Mr. Danzy. Mr. Howard, you will go first on this one.
Good evening. This is a two-part question, so it deals with being business-friendly. Do you consider Warner Robins, specifically government and our licensing process, business-friendly? And what steps would you take to make it more attractive for emerging entrepreneurs to make their businesses legally compliant with legal requirements, local requirements?
I do believe Warner Robins is business-friendly, as evidenced by the number of businesses that we see opening almost daily. We see a new business here and a new business there. I was just driving up 247 today on my way to Macon for an appointment, and I saw that they were breaking ground for a new business. I don't believe Warner Robins has any problems with being business-unfriendly. As to what I would do to make it better for new businesses, I would take a look at the efficiency and what we have to, what we put businesses through in order to get their business license and see if we can smooth that out. I understand that sometimes they have to go through three or four steps in the approval process just to get their license. So I would see what we can do to make that a little smoother.
All right, same question about business, Mr. Larsson, your turn.
Thank you. I agree with Scott completely. I don't think our city has a lot of barriers to people wanting to get into business here in our community. However, I believe we can enhance that whole process through our economic development branch, our recently engaged Warner Robins committee that we're putting together as our arm of economic development. What we'd like to do is offer incentives to local developers and anyone, really, that wants to build in Warner Robins. Through doing that, we can build those businesses, because there are some industries that do have barriers to entry. In Warner Robins, if you start a restaurant or a small business, it's not that difficult. But if you're into industry, sometimes, depending on what that industry is, it could be quite complicated. But we could help that process to assist them through the state and through the federal government, and our Economic Development Board does just that. So we want to continue to build upon that and make sure that we're providing opportunities for our own developers, but also from developers from outside that come in and help build our town. Our town has traditionally been a sort of a bedroom community because of the base, but we certainly want to continue to build on those industries and businesses, bringing them to our area, providing them incentives. Thank you.
All right, same question about business, Ms. Eugene, your turn.
This is a topic that's near and dear to my heart. I am a female entrepreneur. I'm a business owner here in Warner Robins. Starting my own business was a bit challenging, because I didn't know where to go, what to do, where I should go to find the information or find support. So one of the things that I'm looking into is having a list of different places where people can go, you know, different steps. Because for me, I had to go to different, seven different people in order to get what I needed, like my business license, things of that nature, even to pass inspection for my building. So I'm, other cities have a list, so I'm working on putting one together here for us in Warner Robins.
All right, our next question will come from Caitlin Heck. And Mr. Larsson, you will be the first to answer.
Now, you've talked about bringing in new businesses, but what can be done to better nurture some of the existing businesses here in the city?
That's a great question. I really think we have some fantastic businesses and organizations here. And I mentioned a while ago about providing incentives to recruiting new business. Well, we also need to provide those same incentives to our current businesses and industries. Hey, let's help the ones that have been here longest. And I think we do that through our Community Development Block Grant and other incentives through our Economic Development Board, but to continue to try to support them, because we want them to thrive. I mean, that's our strength right now. Whether it's the base or whether it's any business, we want them to be successful, because that's going to make us successful in Warner Robins. And that's where we provide our jobs and all of our economic growth through all of the businesses. So we want to definitely continue to do that, look for ways to provide them more incentives instead of just recruiting new business, providing incentives to those existing businesses.
All right, the help-existing-business question, Ms. Eugene, your turn.
Yes. So some of the things that I am currently doing is we, through my organization, we have Business After Hours. So anyone that has a small business, they can come to this meeting, and we exchange ideas. We try to help each other. And another great fun thing that we do is when someone starts a business, we give them, like people would have bridal showers, we give them a business shower basket, and it's a basket filled with just items for their office. So that's a wonderful incentive. And then also, they can know that, you know, that we care, we're here if they need support, moral support. If they're just having a challenging time, they can call upon us.
All right, the existing-business question, we'll finish up, Mr. Howard.
Okay. I was just thinking, if only there was an organization in town that businesses could go to to get help with things that they need, you know, like a Chamber of Commerce kind of place. They could go there and get help with the things they need, because that organization is a liaison between businesses and government and businesses and businesses. So they could, the resources are here. And if there are any things that need to be done to help a current business improve their business or grow their business, the Chamber is a great place to go do that.
All right, our next question will come from Mr. Danzy. And Ms. Eugene, you will get the first crack at this one.
So you kind of touched on economic growth in the area, and so we all know Houston County's booming, business is booming, we've seen exponential growth, but there are some inequities. How would you attract development in areas that may not be seeing this economic impact like other areas?
Well, there are certain areas that are booming and certain areas that just would need more attention, we can say. So I personally know a lot of people who would love to start businesses here in Warner Robins. However, they're finding some challenges, just, you know, like I said before, where to go, who to go, having the connection, having the right people to connect with, you know, who owns this piece of property, or who owns this building that they can connect with in order to purchase that building or in order to get their business started. So again, just knowledge, just connecting with the right people is key.
Mr. Howard, your turn to answer the question about inequities in certain parts of town.
Inequities in certain parts of town. What comes to mind is our blight problem. Of course, this has been addressed many, many times over many, many years. I understand there's been a study or two done that have identified places, areas of blight in our city. It's time that we actually do something about it. We've studied it. We know what needs to be done, and we know where it needs to be done. It's time to do something about it. We could, part of that blight's problem could be addressed by enticing businesses to set up business in those areas. I'm sure we could provide tax incentives for those businesses to come into those areas. That's not uncommon for cities to do. It's not uncommon for cities to provide roads and things to a business who wants to come in. So I believe there's plenty that we can do to bring businesses into those areas.
And we'll wrap up this question with Mr. Larsson.
Yes, thank you. Hey, this is of great concern to me. You know, I served District Three, and, but you know what? We serve the entire city, and we do have some areas of our city that are weaker than others. And just like any organization, we're only as strong as our weakest link. And I can tell you from experience that when you start developing and redeveloping areas of the city that are more impoverished or blighted, you're making a huge positive impact on your city. We built a $22 million facility on North Houston Road, and we're already seeing tremendous impact economically from that part of town through new businesses coming in, people wanting to move to that area. So those are the kinds of things you can do. Also, some of the things these other people have mentioned is providing incentives in those areas. We have areas of our town that are within a certain map that we do provide those incentives, tax credits, those kinds of things. But a tremendous opportunity for us to take advantage of rebuilding these parts of the city that need it most to make our whole city strong.
All right, continuing with our questions for our District Three candidates, Warner Robins City Council. Caitlin Heck, you have the next question, and Mr. Howard, you will go first on this one.
As we talk about all of the growth within the city, how well do you think the city services are keeping up with that growth? And what can be done to prepare for future growth as more businesses and people come to the area?
I think so far, the city is keeping up well. I do have concerns. We've talked about water leaks and gas leaks, so that indicates there may be some infrastructure problems that need to be addressed, maybe some repairs made, even replacement of certain pipelines and things like that. But overall, I think we're doing well. As far as preparing for future growth, we just have to manage it. We just have to keep control over how much growth we have and where it goes. I know that doesn't sound very democratic, but for us to provide the services that we want to provide to the people that come here, we're going to have to be able to control where those services go and how fast they go in.
All right, the growth question, Mr. Larsson, your turn.
Thank you. We are blessed in Warner Robins to have a vibrant enterprise fund through our water, sewer, and natural gas. Those are the three services that we provide. And we have a great infrastructure in our city already, but it is aging. And as an example, at this moment, we're quadrupling the size of our sewer system towards the south end of the county and replacing lines on the north end to make sure that we can adequately supply those services to the business industries and homes that need them. That's one thing we can do through our enterprise fund. You know, you hear a lot about water leaks and those kinds of things, and there are a lot of water leaks, but we also work with the county on those things. A lot of the water that our citizens use actually is coming from the county, so we have to work in conjunction with them to help fix those problems. So it's a little more complicated, but we still can stay on top of it. As far as our gas service is concerned, we are one of the largest gas customers in the state of Georgia, and that is a great thing for industry and for our citizens. Natural gas is one of the best use of our funds and of our resources, and so we want to continue to support that as we have in the past.
All right, the growth question, Ms. Eugene, we'll finish this question up with you.
Okay, thank you so much. One of the challenge is traffic. Certain areas, like when the base is letting out, the people are going to work, that's one of the areas that we need to work on, is either have, I'm sorry, either have more lanes where people can, you know, be able to not, to get to work quicker, and when schools are in, you know, for the bus lanes to be, kids to get off, things like that. But that's pretty much the area is traffic in Warner Robins. But other than that, the sidewalks are great. Certain areas do need, you know, sidewalks and traffic lights, but, and streetlights. But other than that, traffic is the major issue.
All right, our next question comes from Mr. Danzy. Mr. Larsson, you will go first on this one.
So do you think that having a downtown or city center is important to Warner Robins' future growth?
You know, that's one of the most intriguing things that we have facing us today. You know, with our city being such a new city, relatively speaking, in the late '40s, early '50s, we don't have that downtown shopping area like a lot of the older communities have, so it's very difficult to duplicate that. However, over the years, through tax incentives and different types of programs, we've tried to get that started, and we just haven't been able to do it. But we have some new initiatives that we're working on. That is a great desire of mine, and I think it would be wonderful for our community, because that old downtown area that we call downtown, it could stand a lot of growth and a lot of opportunity through retail and, you know, even loft apartments, any of those kinds of things could just bring back, you know, bring back that vibrancy into that area of the community, which I think is very important, and we're going to continue to work on.
All right, Ms. Eugene, question about the city center for Warner Robins.
Yes, absolutely. We are the international city, so we should have an international festival. That's something that I'm personally working on. I have reached out to other cities that do put on an international city, a festival. I love the food. I love different culture. So entertainment, definitely. Live, play, work will be amazing to have a facility here where we can do all three. And it will also keep our young people here. When my kids graduated, they moved away, and they moved back, thank God, which is a great thing, you know, to have a grandbaby close. But when my kids graduated, they moved away. So why not keep our young people here to thrive and grow Warner Robins? Thank you.
All right, city center question, we'll finish up with you, Mr. Howard.
Okay. I think having a center square is important. I don't know that it necessarily has to be in what we traditionally think of as downtown Warner Robins. That is from Commercial Circle to 247 in front of the base. We could put a market square anywhere we could find the space to do it. The city now stretches from 247 out past US 41. So, and from the north side, from Dunbar, all the way down, really past 96 and south. So we have a lot of area that we could contemplate putting a center square, a marketplace, parks and recreation, those kinds of things. We get a little fixated on the physical location, and I don't think that's necessarily what we have to do. But I am in favor of doing something like that.
All right, next question from Caitlin Heck. Ms. Eugene, you will have the first shot at this one.
As we talk about how diverse and how expansive the city of Warner Robins is, how important is it to have accessible methods of transportation? And what would you do to improve upon the existing transit opportunities in the city?
Okay, so speaking with one of the constituents, she pays $40 for a cab to go from the north side to the WIC office. That's a problem for someone who is already on a limited income. So transportation is a huge issue in certain areas. I know we have the Warner Robins Transit, but it does not go to all streets, all different areas. So accessibility, more transportation, public transportation will be an amazing, and it will certainly help low-income residents. So I'm all for it.
All right, transportation issues, Mr. Howard.
I agree. The transportation issues are important. I come from San Antonio, where we had mass transit, and it was nice when you didn't have a car or couldn't find a ride to be able to get on a bus and get to where you needed to go. I don't know that Warner Robins yet is large enough to support a bus system in the traditional sense, but definitely a transportation system of some kind, building on what we have already to help people get from point A to point B would be nice. More than just a ride from a friend, but not quite a full-blown bus system. It's something in between. I don't yet know what, but we'll find out. We'll make something happen.
All right, Mr. Larsson, we'll finish up the transportation question with you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with Scott on this one. I don't think our city has the appetite or the need for a large-scale bus system, but we do have the Warner Robins Transit Authority, and we do provide some transit system for our citizens. And at one time, it wasn't being utilized quite as much, and then the pandemic hit, and that, of course, put things back a little bit. But we also have nonprofit organizations out there that assist people that need transportation. And through our Community Development Block Grants, we're able to help support them, to help get people to doctor's appointments, grocery stores, those kinds of things. So I would support increasing those kinds of opportunities for our citizens instead of a full-scale transit system, because I think we can meet the needs individually as to where the people need to get to and who needs to get there.
All right, our next question, Mr. Danzy, and we'll direct it first to Mr. Howard.
So homelessness is a national issue. What do you think we can do locally to combat homelessness?
Well, I absolutely think that we could work as a government with local nonprofit organizations, churches and organizations like that, to build homeless shelters and have areas where we can get homeless people to at least have a shelter, at least have a roof over their head and a bed to sleep in at night. When, in Middle Georgia, when the winter comes, all two weeks of it, when the winter comes and it gets cold, there's no place to go. There's no place for them to sleep. I know in the past, some cities have tried to just shuffle their problems off to other cities, but that's really not the way to handle things. We need to work together to come up with solutions that will allow us to help our homeless people. Mental health issues and other problems could be addressed with these facilities.
All right, homeless question, Mr. Larsson, your turn.
Yes, thank you. You know, I would definitely agree with Scott on this one, too. As far as mental health is concerned, the more opportunities and services we can provide there, we can assist with the homeless population. We do currently support our homeless populations through nonprofit organizations and our Community Development Block grant funding. But we also have some opportunities coming in the near future through some federal stimulus funds. About $7.5 million coming our way this year alone, and we intend to use those to support the community and promote these kinds of operations and these activities. Homelessness has to be looked at as a short-term solution for families in need to help them get back up on their feet so they can support themselves. And to do that, it's a very complicated issue, but I believe through the funds that we're getting from the federal government and funds we already have, I think we can do more, and it's my hope and my prayer that we're able to do that in the very near future.
All right, we'll finish up the homelessness question with Ms. Eugene.
Thank you, guys. This is a question that means a lot to me. Through my nonprofit, Trinity Vision Global, we take care of the homeless. We make blessing bags, which is toiletries in the bags. We pass it out, I keep them in my car. We pass it out to the homeless population. We even go into the woods where the homeless are, in Tennessee, and we pass out their information. We pass out pamphlets. We pass out whatever they may need, blankets, things of that nature. We have done so much for the homeless that my organization and myself, we have even been recognized by the White House for doing good works in the community. And it's not just for an accolade, but we've been doing this for so many years that it reached all the way to Washington, the good works that we're doing right here in our own backyard. So I would love to get some of that money to get a shelter or to keep doing the great works that we are doing right here in Warner Robins. Even after the election, we're giving away turkeys. We are doing Christmas giveaways. So please connect with us, because we're doing wonderful things.
All right, our final question here in the question and answer segment will come from Caitlin Heck. And Mr. Larsson, you will go first on this.
I'm going to switch gears on this a little bit. What measures would you do to reduce crime and violence in this city? And is there something that we could be doing differently?
Well, you know, currently, we've had, I believe, seven homicides since the beginning of the first year, and that is seven too many. All seven of those homicides have been solved, thank goodness. But I think it takes a continuous approach from your entire city, not just the police department or fire department, but from everyone. And I think that revolves around building relationships. And I believe as far as our police department is concerned, we need to be out there policing in the community that we live in and building those positive relationships. When you deal with people and when you're dealing with difficult issues, you need to make sure that you're doing it in the most positive way possible, because you can have some difficult situations that are hard to deal with that can come out in a positive on the other side if you approach it the right way. But I do believe that is our most important function as a city, is to provide a safe community to all of our citizens.
All right, the crime question, Ms. Eugene.
Training. Training will be a great tool, more training for the police officers that we have and training for the police officers that is coming in. Also incentives for police officers that's coming in to work in the Warner Robins Police Department. Also incentives to live in the community that they are working in. That would be amazing. Auxiliary, we can have an auxiliary police department to assist and aid the current police officers that we have. That would take a huge load off their plate. And I just, I love it when, I had a police officer living right next door to me in the same community, and I loved it. I felt safer. People knew they couldn't do anything outrageous, because he was right there. So why not? Thank you, guys.
And we'll finish up this question, Mr. Howard.
Thank you. I believe the first thing we can do, or should try to do, is prevention. We tend to think of crime being performed by teenagers or young adults. And I was thinking about this a while ago, and it dawned on me that when I was a teenager, I spent most of my time working on my car. Every young man would buy a jalopy of some kind, a jalopy is an old car, would buy a jalopy of some kind and spend his time fixing it up. And so that he would have funds to fix his car, he would get a part-time job. And between those two things, he pretty much was able to stay out of trouble. He didn't realize he was staying out of trouble, but that's what he did. So prevention would be a major factor, I believe. And then finally, secondly, would be enforcement. We need serious enforcement of the laws, which I believe our police department is already doing well. And then finally, strong, serious punishment for those who do commit crimes. Thank you.
All right, we'll now finish up with closing statements. Mr. Larsson, you will begin, one minute, please.
Thank you, Frank. I've been blessed for the last eight years to serve the greatest city in the country, in the world, for that matter. We have some of the most outstanding people working in our city, living in our city, and it has been a great blessing for me to be able to do that, just play a small part in making it a better place to live for everyone. And I want everyone to know that my commitment remains strong in the area of public safety, in the area of providing a smart, efficient operating city, and also in the area of providing opportunities to all of our citizens, young and old. And I believe that if we can do that, we can continue to build our city, and I would love to be a part of that. And I just covet your votes and your prayers on November the 2nd. Thank you.
Mr. Howard, one-minute closing statement.
All right. I thank you to the Robins Chamber for this opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Malloy, for hosting this. And I pray that you will consider voting for me on November 2nd. I want to see Warner Robins move forward. I want to see us do a better job than what we've already done. We've done a great job, but there's always room for improvement. There's always progress to be made, and I intend to help whoever is elected make that progress and move this city in a forward direction. I want to see the smart city come to fruition. I want to see economic diversity, and I want to see people move here. Ms. Angie talked about international celebrations. That's a great idea, to celebrate the different flavors of this city. So I pray that you will help each of, each, every, every one of us as we seek to do our job and seek to make this a better city. Thank you.
We'll finish up our closing statements. Ms. Eugene, one minute, please.
Yes, 16 years ago, when I decided to move to Warner Robins, I looked up the statistics, and Warner Robins, Houston County, had the best school systems and with an over 80% graduation rate. I mean, that's awesome. It was like 86%. It was like 86%. And I just love the city. I love Warner Robins. I've been here ever since. It's a great place to raise your family, and I don't know everything about politics, but I'm willing to learn, and the more that I learn is the better I can serve. Vote Angie. Thank you, guys, so much.
We want to thank our three candidates for District Three City Council in Warner Robins, Angie Eugene, Scott Howard, and the incumbent Keith Larson, for taking time to be with us and let you know where they stand. We want to thank our panelists, Caitlin Heck and David Danzy. Again, early voting is continuing right now through October the 29th, and Election Day is November 2nd. Thank you.